We are live.
It's not gonna hold because of... Well, actually, I would try it.
Yeah, I don't care.
All right, thank you. Learning lesson.
Hi.
I'd like to call this meeting order. Please rise or pledge allegiance to the home of the silent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Donick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sutis Little.
Here.
And can you state your location?
Yes, thanks for the reminder. Here from Leland Township at my home.
Thank you. Commissioner Allgaier.
Present.
Commissioner Lawton.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Then at this time, we have prayer from Mr. Jonas Yoder, pastor of the Haven of Old Church. Please come up.
Thank you for allowing me to come or asking me to come. I feel honored by that, so we thank you for that. Let's bow our head in prayer. Father, we thank you for this evening, tonight. We thank you for the building that we have, that we're able to come together and conduct business. And we just thank you, Father, for each one that here. We thank you for each one's health and safety as they came here and as they will return again, Father, that you will be with them, and we thank you for that. Thank you for the ones that here that are conducting business and that you will give them wisdom, insight, Father, and discernment, Father, the things that they make decisions that are not always easy, Father, but we thank you for that, and we pray you would give them wisdom on that behalf. And Father, thank you for the men and women that have served in this country that makes it such a great country. We thank you for that. We just thank you for their families and their loved ones that they sacrificed in so many ways, Father, that they could go and defend this country, and we just honor them, and we thank you for them. And Father, we just are grateful for each one here, no matter what position they hold or title they have, Father, but we thank you for continuing health and safety upon them, and we just honor you, and we thank you for this evening, for everyone that's here, God, that you will just watch over them as they return home, Father, that you would watch over them and keep them safe. And we just thank you, and we give you all the glory and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and that will bring us to approval of the board's minutes. Commissioner Lawton.
Yes, I would move for approval of committee of the home minutes Monday, June 21st, 2021.
Or? All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to approve committee of the home minutes Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021.
Or? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
I would move to approve the executive board minutes of Tuesday, July 13th, 2021.
Or? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero.
I'm not all the way through August, but I'm sure if you want to.
Sure. All right, and that would bring us to the approval of the agenda. And the administrator has asked that number six be removed. He's still working with Jerry on that, so we'll just cross off number six. Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, then that brings us then to public comments. Have any public comment? If you want to come forward, please.
Thank you. There is a handout companion to my presentation.
Do you have to announce your name, please?
Yes, I will. My clock starts.
They all have your presentation.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Victor Goldschmidt, 14181 North Cattie Bay Drive, Northport, Michigan. I'm not going to read this to you now. It's good nighttime reading. Instead, I'm gonna go base on that. First, I'm gonna give you three challenges. Backing up a little bit, not all of you may know me very well, although I know most of you pretty well. I consider you all friends. But I have a passion for order, friendships, dynamics, growth, whatever you want to talk about. And when I read the newspapers sometimes, I get unhappy. And you should too. But one challenge for us is to be involved in continuing education. When I was here at the township trustee way back when, I signed up to take some courses and I became a graduate of the Township Governments Academy. It helped me immensely. After that, when I was in the planning commission, I became a citizen planner. I learned a lot. Finally, with you in the county, I went to take some courses because we were relating with zoning administrators, so I got myself to be certified as a zoning administrator. So I challenge you likewise. The office that you're holding, the things you're doing, don't stagnate. Go beyond. I love you guys, and I'm hard too. The second challenge is, yes, haha, haha, this is you. The county board of commissioners, you're a unit above... My PowerPoint was not allowed, so this is a PowerPoint. Above you, there's a host of people, the electorate. They are your bosses. He's not your boss. She's not your boss. The sheriff is not your boss. You are autonomous, but you're responsive to the citizens. And I see that sometimes we are afraid to talk to the citizens. We should stop thinking as right or left. We should start thinking another member of our community in this beautiful county. The divisions that I sense hurt me. Should hurt you too. The third one, the challenge, is a little different. I've worked with many, many groups, many, many groups, and I found out two things that are essential for efficiency and effectiveness. Those are a vision and core values. A vision that you can be unified in, energetic and fantastic vision, and the core values that set the boundaries for your performance behavior as you move towards a vision. Can you visualize that? Do you see a vision? What is your vision right now for you all? Are you embracing the same vision? So I challenge you there, my third challenge. Develop a mission statement and a vision statement. I will talk more about that at the next public comments whenever it comes. The other one now, you are not alone. You also have a treasurer. You also have a county clerk. And you also have what I call the three legs of the exciting stool, the sheriff. And all of these, like you, are autonomous. What does that mean? He, she, he, the treasurer, has no business telling you what to do. You don't have any business telling the county clerk what to do. Likewise, they're autonomous. When I learned that this is a structured government, I was shocked, but it's the way it is.
Five minutes are coming up.
Okay, thank you. You're getting the message. So that now, my diversion, I have four minutes and three seconds.
Yeah, well, I have four minutes and 58 seconds right now. Because we start when you start talking, not, you know, when you start yours.
Okay. My apologies. See you next time.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're barely welcomed.
Any other comments, please come forward. If you can sit in this other chair, he'll be picking up what I was like.
Hi.
This is more.
Thank you. I appreciate the offer. I hope that doesn't count towards my five minutes. Sorry, William, I'm hard of hearing, so I'm using an FM system. I didn't hear you.
Okay, I said, yes, we'll start when you start talking.
Okay. Well, I'll get back to this subject because it needs to be discussed, by the way, with the ADA law, to be ADA compliance for those that are hard of hearing. I think these are really old, and thank you for giving me two because only one ended up working. Anyhow, my name is Alma Vaskis. Most people in the county know me as Rosie, and oddly, I've always been told I know everybody in the county, but looking around the room, I'm shocked that there's some mostly unfamiliar faces. So my nickname is Rosie, and I've been a resident of Leland County for 30 years at least. I came to Leland County as a migrant worker at the age of 12. I've raised two handsome boys that are graduates of a local school district. My husband works locally as well. I will claim him this time. The reason why I'm here is I did write a letter, and I doubt that that was shared, so I'm here to share it tonight. I'm here in light of the anti-racist resolution that I believe each one of you signed and agreed a year ago, actually this month. And thank you, thank you for passing that. But I'm here to ask you, what are you going to do now? Because a year has passed, and I have not forgotten. And I can't speak for the people behind me, but I can tell you that those I do know in this county have not forgotten. My family, my friends, we have not forgotten. And for those of you who think that was the first time such incident has happened, I'm sorry, I've been living here for 30 years, and my first incident was when I got on a school bus to go to school in the fifth grade. In fact, that was my very first experience knowing such thing as color or identifying with a race, because prior to that, I was not separated. Whether that was intentional or not, it happened. Fast forward 30 years later, I have a 22-year-old and a 19-year-old, and they have experienced probably more racism than I've experienced in the 30 years that I've lived here, all in this county. You haven't heard about it? No, because we're told not to speak about it. And we try to focus on the good of the county because there are a lot of great things about this county and awesome, amazing people. In fact, my motto is "It takes a village," and I'm here to remind each and every one of you that it takes a village. And I will not let you forget the resolution that you passed a year ago, and I ask that you take action. And you shouldn't need more stories. I shouldn't have to have my children come up here and tell you the stories that they faced. And it's not about politics. This is not politics. That's the number one problem that everybody is getting wrong. It's not about right or left, it's about human rights. And if you haven't read my shirt, I know the shirt isn't enough to deliver a message, but equality hurts no one, not you, not me, not anybody. And that's what this is about. And I ask you to do the work. I do own a home. I live actually less than a mile down here. I was lucky enough to break all the barriers that I have had to face in my life, side by side with my husband, who has, by the way, served our U.S. Marine Corps, and he is actually a local government agency. If you guys like to get stamps, he probably doesn't like that I just said that out loud, but I've worked for the state of Michigan for 22 years, and I will tell you, not only have I experienced racism in all its forms, my kids have, my husband has. I've seen it in the public sector, I've seen it in the private sector, I've seen it at branches when I worked at Secretary of State. Yes, I did about 18 years there. I usually don't like to disclose that because some of the questions come pouring in. And now I work for an agency called Michigan Rehabilitation Service, and this is part of their mission, about treating people equal and giving them opportunities that people would not normally give those with disabilities because they are different. And that rule applies to people with different colors.
Five minutes is up.
Well, I had a lot more to say, but I'll come to the next meeting. I encourage you to take action.
We do have a public comment at the end of the meeting, too.
Thank you.
Any other, please come forward if there's anyone else.
Everyone, my name's Taylor Moore. I live at 1458 West Trumbull Road, Maple City. Thank you, Rosie, for sharing. We need to hear Rosie. I have heard too many stories like that, and I too am asking you all to put in the work to make this a place where people feel like they belong to the community. That's not the case right now. It hasn't been. So I believe that we need more aggressive actions and more discussion around the critical issue of racism. Anti-racism needs to be the top priority of the board because in addressing racism, you address inequities, you address inequalities, and you begin to see in our community what our neighbors are facing, what we are confronted with. Many do not have the resources they need to live happy and healthy lives, and there are patterns. We have a remarkable community of Black, Indigenous, and other people of color who are willing, who have offered to support you and other organizations to work on this. And I would like to see a task force, some initiative shown, more initiative shown, pardon me, to support them, to participate with them, to hear them. And, yeah, I feel hopeful, but I am reticent. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Ralph Van Walthousen, Centerville Township. Rosie, that was really moving. I'm not sure I can get through this. But I do have something prepared for you all. Buried under an otherwise hopeful headline in the August 11th Leland ticker titled "The Rescuers: How Leland Peninsula-Grown Produce Is Getting on the Plates of Its Own Struggling Families." Through that article, we learned a staggering statistic reported by the Urban Institute, and that is that Leland County has the largest affordability gap in the nation between what the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program covers for economically disadvantaged families and the average cost of a meal. In dollars, while the average meal is estimated to cost $6.16, the assistance is only $1.97, exceeding by 68% the cost that income-constrained individuals and families face when trying to budget, trying to put food on the table. I don't know about you, but it costs us a fair amount more than $6.16 a meal to put locally grown nutritious food on our table. So to me, this figure is low. In any case, according to Taylor Moore, manager of the goodwill program Food Rescue, which coordinates its work with other nonprofits such as Leland Christian Neighbors, the number of working households in Leland County struggling to make ends meet is 43%. A volunteer helping to coordinate the food pantry described the 43% in this way, quote, "Our neighbors work more than two jobs, but unfortunately, they are not making a living wage to be able to live well in Leland County. People have to make hard choices about paying bills or buying nutritious food. While we've all known for years that housing is increasingly out of reach for people who work here, perhaps it's no surprise that food is also increasingly out of reach. Being number one in the nation for being unaffordable for those doing frontline and day-to-day work in our community is not something we should be proud of or to let continue. However, what troubles me even more than these statistics is that nowhere are these economic realities listed as a topic for discussion on tonight's agenda, rarely on anyone's agenda. You recently asked for ideas to how to spend the $4.2 million windfall Leland County will receive in American rescue funds, allocations of which fall into the five broad categories that include public health, economic hardship, essential workforce, public sector revenues, and water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Certainly, lack of affordable housing and food fit into at least four of these five. What if the county were able to use just a small fraction of these rescue funds to create one or two part-time positions that both leverage additional grant monies as well as to begin addressing the very real affordable housing and affordable food issues negatively impacting the health and vitality of our community? I'm not suggesting government is responsible for solving these problems, but I do think there's a role for you that you can play in helping coordinate and direct actions with individuals and other organizations, both in private and nonprofit sectors, who also have a role to play. From the statistics quoted earlier, it's clear to me that what we've been doing thus far doesn't work. Both government and "the marketplace" have failed in their claims, as my dad would say, they have failed to earn their keep. Maybe it's time to try something different. And I want to conclude with one other mention, and this is not directed personally at my friend who gave that really nice prayer, but I noticed that prayer is included on the agenda, but it is not included of all faiths. We had and have just Christian included, but what about Native American? What about Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist, Unitarian, Quaker? I found there's 44,000 denominations out there, according to Wikipedia, so I'm leaving a lot of people out here. I'd like to conclude by saying in matters of faith, prayers do speak loudly. Thank you very much.
Any other, anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Fred. I'm a resident of Cedar, and I'm also here tonight to speak about the one-year anniversary of the Ecklerly Incident, the racist incident that occurred exactly a year ago, and the adoption unanimously of the anti-racism resolution by this board. It was exactly a year ago to this meeting, August of 2020, that you unanimously passed that resolution, and since that time, we've noticed that some things have occurred. You had a training, that's great, and we've had some conversations about next steps, but since, but other than that, very, very little has occurred. I'm going to take some time at the end to read the resolution to you to remind us all of what you all agreed to together in unity, which I think is an amazing thing for a board that is partisan and has its differences, as you all know. But you all stood together in condemnation of that incident and in recognition that that was not an isolated one. As Rosie has said and many others that you've heard at your trainings and at other conversations that you've had with people in our community, these are not isolated occurrences. These happen all the time, and perhaps we don't feel it as white people. We don't know what it's like to be a person of color in this community, to walk down the street as a person of color. I can't say that I understand what that feels like, but I listen to our neighbors who tell me, and I try to empathize with those folks and to help them and to ally with them so that we can make sure that that stops happening. That someone cannot go to a meeting as an elected official and feel so bold, so bold in his whiteness, that he thought it was okay to say the N-word at a formal meeting. That should take our breath away. That should stop us in our tracks, and it did. It stopped you all in your tracks, and you passed a resolution to deal with it. And I ask you now to continue to work on it, to commit to working on it. That's what you said in your resolution, and I'm asking you to do that. A group of citizens after that event came together and put forth 10 ads. Every one of those ads was written and drafted by people in Leland County. We had a core group of about a dozen people. The group was called, is called Northwest Michigan United for Racial Equity. We founded it after that event, that incident, and we put forth ads in an attempt to bring awareness to this issue, to raise this issue, to educate our community that these happen, these things happen, and they continue to happen. Even though only a dozen of us have so worked on these, they cost $12,000 to put these ads together, and I'm proud that we supported our local paper in doing so. But we didn't pay for all those ads. We got from hundreds of people. People sent money to us. They sent $11,000 after we had started putting out these ads, and we established a P.O. box, a random P.O. box, and we started putting out these ads, and we started getting checks, one after another, after another, after another. $11,000 came to us in the matter of a month to put these ads out. We also got hundreds of comments on our website form, very simple website form we put up, just smack dab. We tried to put something together in response to this, to do what we could, to do anything we could. It wasn't professional, it wasn't paid for by any experts. We just did it as community members, and the community responded. They sent us $11,000. They didn't even know really who we were, and yet they sent us money to do this. That is because people care. They care deeply about this issue, and they are disturbed that this happens in our community, to our friends, and our family, and our community members. We have to do something about it. We can't just continue to just let this go on and pretend it doesn't happen and just go on with our business because it doesn't happen to us. That is not okay. It's just not. And I'm going to take whatever time I have left to read the resolution and get through as much as I can, just so that we all remember what this board came together unanimously to pass a year ago tonight. Resolution 2020-014, Resolution to Condemn Racism in Leland County. Whereas the Leland County Board of Commissioner has promoted and continues to promote diversity, inclusion, equality, and equity in all aspects of county government, whereas racism defined as... Whereas racism defined as, quote, "a belief that certain races are by birth and nature superior to others," Merriam-Webster, close quote, "can present itself in many forms, conscious and unconscious, but often..." Okay, thank you. I urge you to continue working on this issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Beth Verhey. I live in Lillenau Township. And I've been writing you and calling in. I didn't prepare something this evening, but wanted to come in person and really would like to echo some of the other very well-prepared, articulate, and passionately delivered points that my fellow citizens and community members have been making. As you know, the focus of my reaching out to you in the last recent months has been exactly on the local poverty data that a couple of people have also been flagging. And that it's just the figures have been worsening and worsening, including drawing from data from 2019 before the pandemic. So when I first wrote you, it was fueled by a sense of irony that a new report from a Michigan Poverty Task Force was out, that the new Alice report was out, the new kids count report was out. And I just found it incredibly ironic that the Lillenau Enterprise framed the $4.2 million that Lillenau County would be getting as a windfall, like a windfall. This is going to be a drop in a bucket to address, no matter from what budget or what program it's going to go through, to bring about the change that is needed for us to have a viable economy and a viable future. We need working households in our county that can afford to live here and continue to contribute to the beauty and all the blessings that we have. Those need to be inclusive. These issues are interrelated. When we look at who is this indeed over 40% of our population that can barely make ends meet and working multiple jobs, they are also the minority groups by and large. It is also symptomatic when we look at all the stories about fighting about public access to beaches and protecting private property and who has this. We need leadership as part of dispelling myths and improving attitudes and civility in our communities. At this point, I would just repeat part of what I submitted as just an individual advocate in terms of the ideas for the American Rescue Plan Funds, that these indeed be some of the criteria. But I also urge that you pledge to adopt those criteria and start to have those buckets and follow-up discussions with those submitting implementable proposals in terms of organizations in the next two months. Get this money into the mechanisms and pathways that is going to reach people within this year. It's fantastic, the flexibilities and the timeframe that are provided for with those funds. But the people that are hurting are hurting now. And you really don't need to wait for 2024 to really bring all of those into some meaningful actions. And I'd also like to chime in for some of the points made about agenda item. I think part of what could build traction in your own work would be to have standing agenda items on poverty in our county, racism, discrimination. You can feature different aspects of that in each meeting so you can unpack different policy actions that need to happen as you move across month by month, because you certainly can't do it all in one meeting or one special meeting workshop. But thank you for the commitment you showed a year ago and for the stakeholder process that you did commence for the American Rescue Plan Funds. I think that's part of also what's really important. Listen to your community members here, the ways that they've been affected by the pandemic and are struggling. And I hope that you'll be able to bring these agenda items forward. Thank you. I will take all five minutes.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Charles Knapp, Cleveland Township. I wasn't going to say anything. I was just going to sit here and hopefully got this over with before nine o'clock because I've got a TV program I want to watch. However, now one of these people got up here crying about racism. He gives one single solitary concrete example of it. They just cry about it in general. How many of these people have actually do - what happens? They're all white, except for the fast-cas lady.
If you're talking to me...
No, I'm not. Hang on.
You cannot be talking, speaking out. He has the - he's here.
So, oh, she gave the example of - thank you. She gave the example of her of getting on the school bus when she was very young. Somebody probably says something to her. Well, I grew up in Mount Pleasant. We had lots of people. Most of them had stayed over from the migrant labor forces that came through regularly in the 1950s under the Breselro program. And they just went to high school. They were just there with everybody else. And we never looked twice. So I don't know what the effect - one of my high school teachers, French and Spanish teacher, had descended from one of those families. They just, they stayed over, became citizens. And, and he was a great teacher. We really liked him. But anyway, how are you supposed to - nobody's given any concrete examples for how we are supposed to combat racism. What are you supposed to do? Have classes saying you shouldn't be racist? Most people just go about their business. I know I do. How do these people come in and say, they somehow... What do people do? Walk up to them on the street and say, "I experienced racism"? How do they know any of this? This sounds to me like very much set piece, prepared statements, just like that ad in the Enterprise. And I just want to point out that when people come up with it, they've got concrete suggestions for how you're supposed to do this. For example, taking impoverished minority family into your own house. Well, that's a suggestion, but they're not going to do it. So all this comes down to one point. How many people, people normally associate within their own kind, they just do. If you took 10,000 people and dropped them into a stadium, 2,000 each from all five racial groups, I'll bet you by the end of the day, they'd all be gathered together with other people who look like them or speak the same language or whatever. People tend to do that. It's human nature. You can't change it. So if we've really got this terrible racism problem in this country because that one nitwit on the road commission made that comment, I'd like the people who bought that ad, got up here and talked all about it, took up with concrete suggestions for how we are supposed to make, combat racism, meaning basically make everybody non-racist. Because it's my opinion, the people who talk about racism the most are probably racist themselves and for whatever reason are trying to cover it. I also noticed I'm probably the only Republican who got up here and talked tonight, which kind of makes me wonder too. But that's neither here nor there, and I wanted to throw that into the mix because you cannot simply have a class that says everybody shouldn't be racist. I mean, you can do it. But it's not going to change anybody's thinking, whether they are or not. And most of us just want to live our lives, be left alone, enjoy Lillenau, because it really is a beautiful place. I almost forgot. Saw a food truck distributing food at Smear's Closet today. And all the people picking up food out of that food truck were driving very nice cars. Maybe they're taking it all to your Christian neighbors or whatever. But there wasn't a single junk car in that parking lot, believe me. In fact, mine was one of the older ones, but I was just dropping stuff off. So there's that to consider too. As long as you basically make it possible for people to exist when they're supposedly below the poverty line, they'll continue to exist below the poverty line. So, like I say, to most people's relief, wasn't planning to say anything, but I figured somebody better get up here and say something because it's very clear that some very well-prepared statements, with which I haven't disagreed in many respects, were made up here. So I didn't have a prepared statement. But that's my unprepared one. Thanks for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on. I'm sorry. Oh, please come forward. Sorry.
Good evening. John Hunter, Bingham Township, District 2. 87.3% of statistics are made up on the spot, as we saw from the previous commenter just a moment ago. He has repeatedly claimed that brown hordes were invading our country, that the Fugitive Slave Act apparently was for the benefit of slaves. He says that basically slavery is an issue. We should just get over it. Well, that is certainly not... It's certainly not the correct way to be. We opened this meeting with a prayer of which personally, you know, that I've been against. But even then, it asked for compassion. It asked for salvation possibly. Yet everything I just heard in the last five minutes significantly flies in the face of that. I would agree with most of the commenters here tonight that each of you have a duty to move forward with this anti-racism resolution. It has been a year. Knowing that just one person said it in one public meeting, well, I think we just heard another variation of a minute ago. So I think it'd be best if you all could agree to move forward, get it resolved, because as the young woman's T-shirt says, equality doesn't hurt anybody. And it is your job to find that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward then. So that brings us then to communications, presentations, presentations. So I'm going to move on to the action items. The first item is the...
There was no action last week. I was just looking for input if the commissioners wanted that. And I believe one commissioner asked for the information, so I'm just following through with that.
Okay. So did she receive the information?
I will have it for next month when I come before you to present the names of the parties. Give me.
Thank you. All right, then the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. Mr. Alguer.
I move that the Lillenau County Board of Commissioners approve Grant 2022-57 between the State of Michigan, MIDC Lara, and Lillenau County for the grant period October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, with an authorized budget of $259,052.32, funding to come from state grant contribution 2067 through 672, and local share contribution $52,315.70, as presented.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Yes.
Commissioner, Alguer was reading that she could say 72, but if it's okay, I was going to correct that to 62, because that is the correct amount. If that's okay.
Sorry, I didn't see dollars.
I know. But if that's okay with...
Yeah.
She did it for 206,000, so that you're clarifying this whole - it is 63.70. Yes, thank you.
62.
62, it's a...
All right, so the motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Rush.
I would move that the Board of Commissioners waive its its policy on bid requirements and pending council review and approval enter into an independent contractor agreement with attorney Paul Girbo, right, that's how you say it, of Girbo and Field, attorneys as the indigent defense attorney, administrator for Lillenau County in the amount of $45,000 for the period of October 1, 2021 through September 30 of 2022, with the funds to come from number 260, the Indigent Defense Fund. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Commissioner Lara.
I move that Lillenau County Board of Commissioners accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $500 to account number 101000000000674006. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Rush.
I move that the Lillenau County Board of Commissioners allow the sheriff's office to apply for the 2022 fiscal year secondary road patrol grant through the Michigan Office of Highway Safety and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the application. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Rush.
I move that Lillenau County Board of Commissioners allow the sheriff's office to apply for the 2022 fiscal year secondary road patrol grant through the Michigan Office of Highway Safety and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the application. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Alguer.
I move that the Lillenau County Board of Commissioners move the solid waste council purchase of cameras for recycling sites forward.
Maybe truly just...
Yeah.
That's what was brought forward.
We are given such great notes, you guys. We talked about this at lunch that promised.
Can I help? I think I better explain this a little bit.
And you changed it.
I did. Good evening.
It would be great if you told us what you did.
Sure. So there's two items for you tonight, and I actually have a minor correction on each one of them. So the first one is the purchase of cameras for the recycling sites. I sent you out a revised memo, and I think you have hard copies. Okay, so to try to help you out, I put in red what the changes were. So we actually did receive a quote under bid net, but I didn't realize it because it got categorized under a tab, which it shouldn't have. So I didn't catch it until I went back in there. So I took that and I reviewed it with Ron Plamond, our IT director. He likes that system. He says it's a good system. The difficulty is that it's a little more expensive for the sites. So I gave you a revised recommendation for your consideration, which would be to go forward with cameras with two companies, EPS Security out of Traverse City and Security 101 out of Canton, Michigan. Security 101 would be used at the sites where we wouldn't have a building because it would be an easier setup. I'm fine with either recommendation. If you wanted to go with EPS Security for all of them, that's fine with me. I just need some direction. So if we're going to do cameras, we can get this rolling.
Okay, so you're going to be able to do all the sites?
No, not all of them, because we're limited under the terms of our grant, of our recycling grant. But we're going to hit the most used sites first, and then we'll have a couple that will go into next year. I'll actually be talking to you about it at your next budget meeting.
Well, all right, I keep telling you to talk about you liked one better than the other. Which one did you like better than the other?
He liked Security 101 because of the way it's set up. We did phone calls with each of these companies. Security 101, instead of having a monitor at the site, which has to be housed in a building or in some type of a secure and waterproof box, it can be used where you can go to the site with your laptop, plug into the camera if you know you've got to look back, say, for a day on some video feed to see who created the problem at the site. You can do that and download it right to your computer, or you can just view it and snap the parts that you want from the video feed. But it is a more expensive system, and they did not include maintenance. If we need any maintenance, that would be in addition.
So we don't have...
But it is a more expensive system, and they did not include maintenance. If we need any maintenance, that would be in addition.
So we don't have... There's quite a large difference between the two programs.
Yes.
And as you mentioned, you're not approached to either one. I'm just wondering if we take a look at the EPS and operate that system for many years. I assume the contract is a one-year contract?
For EPS? Let me pull that up. There's a monthly service fee on that.
Monthly service fee on that's $40, it appears.
Right.
I'm assuming that's per site?
Yes, it is.
Okay. As opposed to $9,500 for installation, $22,300 for equipment, for $31,885 plus...
Yeah, the Security 1 pretty much doubles what we would spend at a site. And so when I talked with Ron, I said, well, what do you think of the idea if we used EPS everywhere we can at the lower cost and the Security 101 where there's no building and it would be more accessible? And he said that would be a good option. So that's why you got the recommendation that you did. But like I said, I'm happy with either one of those. If we go with the lower cost with EPS, they're in Traverse City. They'll service the sites for us, maintain the cameras. We'll make it work.
So we have the funding for this?
It's through the recycling grant.
There isn't...
Commissioner Lawler had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. It wasn't...
Yeah, you have to raise your hand.
I'm reading. Sorry. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So Trudy, but the Security 101 has infrared, correct? And it's really probably the only rugged option for at least one of the sites. Is that a fair statement?
That's probably a fair statement, yeah.
Yeah. So how many of the EPS are... I thought we were going to look at your few sites to start, or would you like to do more sites?
I would like to do as many as I can under those grants.
Okay.
Yep. So the original motion, I had it in there with the not-to-exceed amount of $27,456 under the recycling grant.
Twenty-seven thousand...
Four-five... four-five-six.
$27,456, is it?
Yes.
So I would move that the Leland County Commissioners authorize planning commission to purchase the EPS security cameras and a Security 101 camera for recycling sites and then not to exceed $27,456
I think it's a solid waste.
To come out of... Yes, funds to come out of solid waste council...
Recycling.
Recycling. Solid waste. You gotta go with...
On the back there, it's...
Okay.
I support that when Melinda figures out what her motion really is.
Pretty much what I just said.
Okay. Right from there?
Yep.
Maybe I can repeat it?
Yep, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Motion by Lawler to select EPS security and Security 101 for the purchase and installation of cameras at the recycling sites with funds to come from the recycling grant, not to exceed the grant amount of $27,456.
Exactly what I said. Thank you.
It's supported by... Yes, did you have a question?
I do. Trudy, where do we need that extra security, in your opinion?
Could you clarify what you mean by extra security?
Commissioner Mountner has made a motion to utilize both types of cameras.
Oh, gotcha.
So as I understand, Security 101 has infrared, as was stated. So in your opinion, where do we need that? Or what site will that be going to?
I'm thinking Cedar would be a good one for that site. We don't have a building close by to house the monitor, which would cause, you know, that would be additional work. So I'm thinking that site and Empire Site.
And historically, have we had issues at one or both of those sites?
Both.
What type of... what type of problems?
Materials left that shouldn't be left there, large bulky items. I got an email from someone just the other day from the Empire Site, and I responded back letting them know what we're doing and that I would get back with them tomorrow to let them know the decision of the board. So they're very anxious to get some cameras.
And if I may, hazardous waste also?
I have one more question. And how are you going to choose between the sites?
I'm... Excuse me. The sites where there's buildings within an appropriate distance where we can put the equipment inside, we'll go with the EPS system because it's lower price and it will work. The sites like Empire and Cedar where we don't have those buildings close enough, we need to look at that other company, Security 101.
Are you doing more than two sites this round?
Yes. Yes. I'm going to do as many as we can with that amount of money.
Commissioner Alguer.
I'm just glad we have this discussion. Thank you. And thank you for this. I did do surveys at the sites, and some of the things people leave are pretty horrendous. After a hazard... A couple of days after the hazardous waste recycling, somebody came to Cedar and basically emptied out all the hazardous waste from the garage and just left it. And one of the boxes was labeled hazardous waste. And they left it at Cedar. It's pretty horrific, so I would be really glad to see cameras.
Commissioner Rush.
I have one additional question. When I'm looking at Security 101, as I mentioned, installation's $9,500. Equipment's $22,300. That quote is for how many sites?
He quoted for six sites, which was what was... We posted on BidNet.
Okay. And the average for six sites is 53.14.
Yes, I broke it down that way. The actual bid they put in... They did a lot of work. They put in every single one and separated them as to what they would do for the sites.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just wondering how many sites we are going to be able to get a camera on before we use up the recycling grant dollars. I was looking, hoping that we could encompass more sites by going with the other company.
I understand. I can tell you right now, there's three sites that... Two sites that are existing, one that's proposed that I was not looking at for cameras this year. One is Golden Lake School. It's a small site. They have cameras there. The other one is Sutton's Bay School. They also have cameras, but we're moving the site. And as you know, there's a termination of that. We're working on that. And then the third one is the Pop Road Site, which is not up and running yet. So I'm going to focus on all the remaining sites. And I'll keep you updated too on the progress.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you. Bring us to the Planning and Community Development.
Yes, so there's one... Sorry.
Yeah, there's a hand up.
I was going to make a modification. Okay, I just wanted to let you know that there was a modification to this because after talking with our attorney, it was decided we should put the guidelines into this agreement as well. So the guidelines are attached in Exhibit B. They were referenced in the past with the document that you got for your meeting last week. We want to put them in here so that they're a part of the agreement. And the other one... Other thing I wanted to just correct from last meeting is that the loans are with Leland County and the homeowners. So I had told you last week, I thought that we had to change that with the state and the homeowner, but it's between the county and the homeowners.
I don't think that changes the motion we need. I think the motion that we agreed on would remove that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waive its policy on bid requirements and enter into an agreement with the Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency to conduct housing emergency projects using the county's program income subject to final review by council.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go.
Yes.
We have a problem with...
Just one minute. I apologize. I can't stay long. I just had knee surgery on Thursday. But I do want to let you know that I have a ton of ideas and I'm willing to meet with each and every one of you just to share those ideas, concrete, solid ideas, if you want to hear them. And if you don't, I'll still... Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Probate Court and the Safe Haven Child Family Services.
I move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve a contract in Leland County and the Child and Family Services Safe Haven for the distribution of 2% of tribal council allocation funds for $5,000, as directed by our county's corporate counsel. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Commissioner Russell.
We're on the next question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept $37,985 from the fiscal year 2022 appropriations for Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. RTA 2022 raised the age to cover costs which are incurred by the court that are not reimbursed through the Child Care Fund.
All those in favor. So Alguer, hand rush both second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Commissioner Robbins. Yes.
I move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the bid for numerous crane and dozers of construction of the Fish Pond Pathway at Ranick Valley Park, amount not to exceed $23,500. Funds come from 101-850-756-97000.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign, aye. Motion passes six to one. All right, that brings us to number eight.
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the appointment of Administrator Chet Janik as the officer delegate to attend the 75th Annual MERS Conference and to appoint County Clerk Michelle Crocker as the alternate officer delegate at a cost of $205 per person. And those funds to come from Board of Commissioners' travel line, 101-100-101-860, and Board of Commissioners' education line,
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. So then the KRP time.
Yeah, I want to start by thanking everyone who took the time to submit proposals and suggestions and emails. I counted this afternoon. 122 emails came in with suggestions. Most of them referred to broadband and internet option. And I believe we received 19 proposals. And so I'm not going to fore those. What I'm going to do is going to put them all up with them in a book and put them in kind of sequence because maybe $4 would just be difficult for you to grasp that. So hopefully next week, Laura and I will get a packet for each of you. So you'll have every single comment that you see and all those proposals. I believe one of the few counties that actually I've asked for public input at this point to do this. So I felt very good about 100-plus people responding, 120-some people responding. And I did respond to every single one and told them that the board would be getting copies of all their comments and suggestions. So probably the next week to 10 days, you'll get a large booklet with all those feedbacks, comments, suggestions, and all the proposals that were included. In terms of next steps, I'm going to talk to Mr. Bonnet. We both kind of agree we have to get through our budget process. I know we're struggling to find meetings to do the budget. And I suggest that, and I think Mr. Bonnet agrees, once we get through the budget process, we should have a special meeting just to review that. But I'll try to get you all those by the next week. So at least at your leisure, you can take time and read them and look at the proposals and so forth. And then we can set a meeting date.
Have we gotten different rules again? Have they come?
No. Well, there's no difference. It was the guidelines. The deadline for submission of guidelines comments was July. And I mean, I was actually at a meeting yesterday at the Northwest Services. I've been hearing that they have kind of confirmed that those final guidelines should be out probably by mid-September, so fairly soon. I don't think they're very much from the initial guidelines, and they still will be fairly vague. And so you're not going to get a book saying A, B, C is acceptable. This is not. It's still going to be fairly vague. And so we're working together trying to... I guess the word advice is be careful. They also are from a... I don't know just yet if this makes sense. Don't rush too quickly in the state of money. There may be some other federal dollars coming forward. Michigan has about 50% of the last year's funds a day have not allocated. So there may be funds coming forward for broadband, for infrastructure, for roads, and so forth. So you may want to wait on those type of projects to see if there are other pots of money available. And so, yes, yeah, yeah. So I think we're taking the right approach. The first report's due August 31st, but like most counties, we have not allocated any funds for that yet, but that report is due. I think I mentioned before, we do have half the funds here. The deadline to allocate the funds is December 31, 2024. The deadline to actually spend all the money, December 31, 2026. So next 10 days, you'll get a large packet of every email received and all the proposals that you can look at. And then we probably will have to send meetings next month sometimes to look and we can determine what our priorities are and how you wish to allocate it. Because there's no set guidelines in terms of the process. That's up to each board to decide how that is allocated. This is federal money, which is completely money separate from the money that some townships and villages could apply for. That they have to go through the state of Michigan, and they have to apply for that. About 93% of all units of government in Michigan have done that. Some have chosen not to do it, but that's a separate process. So people are... Some people are confusing those funds with this fund. So this is separate. This money that we received, zero recovery, is separate from money last year, which was for all units of government, zero recovery. This is strictly for zero recovery government, determining how these are allocated.
Rush.
You had mentioned that the state might be coming forward with funding for certain specified projects. Do we know what the timeline of that could possibly be, by the end of the year?
It could be next week to next month or near. It's difficult to say.
Well, I'm just wondering if it would be go beyond the end of the year?
I think there's momentum to have it resolved this year. This is calendar year.
The only reason I ask that question is because it's going to be a challenge to be able to go with making those decisions. And there are some projects out there that are... have value for the community as a whole. And instead of spending out of one pot, if we're going to, you know, get a specific grant amount for, like, say, infrastructure for towers or broadband, I would hate to spend from the pot here and not the pot there.
There are also, and I won't go into detail, there's an interesting formula complicated for about revenue loss. And it's not based on revenue versus expenditure. It's based on expenditures, and they determine they should increase by 4.1% a year. So if our revenue has not kept up with that, even though we may have to be in black, we may be eligible to take some of those funds on the revenue loss, which means that pot of money that you normally with us not received, you could spend on projects outside of these guidelines to get you more flexibility. So that's a complicated formula that actually the council government or former council government, the Northwest Networks, they made brilliant consulting to do an analysis of each county. At our meeting yesterday, all their administrators said it'd be great if they would break someone and do that for every county to really make a judgment if we truly can file under that category. So you'll be hearing more about that.
Commissioner Russell.
I wanted to commend Chet for the way that process has worked and commend all of us, I think, for the approach of going out and taking recommendations. And 122 different emails, that sounds like there's been a lot of involvement. And so thank you, Chet and Laurel, and congratulations to us, I think, for getting input.
Well, you heard that as a suggestion and you took it on, and I thought that was great, too. Yeah.
Heard work starts, the heard work starts now.
That was the easy part.
And I'm almost thinking the end of next month would be too soon. Just, you know, but we'll see.
Well, you'll get the book that you can read at it. And then we can make a judgment call. I'll put it on the agenda for the midterm meeting.
Another update.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Then you could, by then you'll have the books. Then you can have the dialogue on how you wish to proceed.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. So then, then that brings us to the broadband study update. Commissioner Sosa, did you have something to say?
I had something when she's done.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. I spoke with Chris and Chris Shear, who is doing the study. And he is almost complete, just putting up the final touches. Chairman Bunny and I chatted and agreed that rather than have him try to present in a 15-minute time slot at one of our meetings, that it would be good to schedule a special meeting so that he can do a full presentation. It's complex data, but it's going to be good data. And I think it's exactly what we need to make any decisions that we might want to make in terms of expenditure of dollars towards broadband infrastructure or broadband service in and of itself. So maybe tomorrow or, well, perhaps it's best to wait until we get the actual results on our hands and then set a meeting to, to go ahead. But that would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Ross, do you have something?
Um, nothing big to do with the study, but I, I do know there's a couple of different companies looking very hard at, at bringing broadband into, actually more than broadband, fiber into the county. And I've been dialoguing with them. We're trying to get something down there. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Rush.
I'm just wondering, Commissioner Sosa's little mentioned a special meeting. I would prefer to have something called a study session. So instead of a special meeting, something like that, I think that we may have more than, you know, a presentation and then an expectation to implement a motion. So I would like that to be considered.
Mr. Sosa.
Commissioner Rush, you're exactly correct. I missed, I really did, didn't choose my words wisely. I think a study session is exactly what we need, not a special meeting. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So then we move on to number 10, the letters of support.
Did we get a copy?
Yes. They gave it to us at our, at the last.
Oh, yeah. Nothing updated from that. Okay.
Commissioner West.
I think.
Commissioner Sosa.
No, no, it, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Russell. You're there and it's easier to hear you.
I recommend that we approve the letter as presented at last week's meeting and have the chair sign and send on to the tribe for inclusion in the grant.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner West.
And I further move that we construct a similar letter and send that on to our senators and our representatives.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
That's what we talked about on Tuesday.
Well, that's part B. It's on our agenda here.
It's part B, but we haven't seen, sorry.
Well, we had to, Commissioner West.
We haven't seen the letter because I thought we talked about Tuesday as just the same letter sending.
So I wanted to clarify. So sending the same letter to our representative. Thank you for that.
Almost a CC.
Yeah, I think it'll just be, Dear sir, this is the letter. Good man.
So is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a second?
Court. I think we both support.
All right. Any other questions or statements? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Does that bring us to a review of financials? I didn't have any questions.
I, I did the accounting, DHL answers that I think all of them. We want you to get back with me on that. Yeah, okay. Take that.
Any other? So then we have to move this to committee reports, recommendations, and resolutions. I was just interested in that resolution that Grand Rapids County was putting out about clarifying the vaccine. I'd love to see what they, they, they said about it. They were just asking the health department to.
It's tomorrow.
Yes, yes. So the meeting will be tomorrow at eight.
See if they amend it and take a look at it. Okay.
I think we're asking the health department to, to do what?
I believe it was to have the health department put a clarification when they talked about the vaccine, that, that they go and talk to their, their personal doctor, rather than the health department recommending it. Get a recommendation from their own personal doctor as a, as opposed to a recommendation from the health department.
That makes sense. They're not doctors.
Right. I, I don't know. I just, we'll, we'll see how it goes. But I just thought it was kind of interesting that.
I'm assuming we don't want to talk about that tonight.
No, no, I was just bringing it up because, you know, we may, maybe something we could do. I don't know.
I, I wanted to thank the people that reminded us about our anti-racial resolution. One of the things that we did do, weren't we on, Commissioner, come?
Not yet. No, this is just for committees' resolutions, other things. I, I guess we could kind of call it under resolutions. But I was thinking, no, that's just future ones or something. But go ahead.
Well, I wanted to remind us that, that the chair did last week urge us to reach out to the tribe or representatives on the Board of Commissions. And I think that was one of the things we said we wanted to do. But I do, I do hope that after we get our budget work done, we can delve in and check and make sure we're, we're back having a conversation.
So then, we need special reports from staff commissioners or affiliated agencies. So then that would then bring us to public comment. Is there any more public comments? Please come forward.
Thank you for your time. I just think it's important to give, oh, Ellen Fred in Cedar. Again, thank you. I just think it's important that we review the text of the resolution. So I'm going to read it to you. You know, there was statements made that, and questions asked about what sort of incidents of racism incur in this county. And I think we've heard stories. I think we've heard enough stories. Your training included a BIPOC, which stands for Black Indigenous People of Color Panel, that relayed stories of incidents that occurred in the county. So I'm not sure if Mr. Knapp participated in that. I did. And I thought it was a wonderful training. I hope there are more. And the resolution calls for more for all, all department heads and all elected officials in the county. So I hope that that occurs. But I don't think that we need to, again and again, ask our BIPOC community members to relay traumatic stories to us simply so that we'll act. I really don't think that's necessary. We've heard the stories. We know that we need to act. So I'm asking you to do that. And he also asked about concrete actions. And this resolution actually calls for certain actions. And I would also suggest that this board constitute a coalition or committee of the board to focus and delve into the subject and bring action items to this board, an anti-racism coalition that could be a part of the, the county commission and/or arm of it, just like the opioid or substance abuse commission or committee. I don't remember the exact terminology, but the commit, the coalition or task force for substance abuse. I would like it to be constituted in the same vein. And I think that that committee could take these action items, talk about them, and bring action items to the board. That would be, I think, a very good use of county resources. So I will read to you the resolution because, again, this board united in its passage of this resolution. And I think it's extremely important that we remember what we, what you agreed to do. I'll start from the top. Whereas the Leland County Board of Commissioners has promoted and continues to promote diversity, inclusion, equality, and equity in all aspects of county government. And whereas racism defined as a belief that certain races are by birth and nature superior to others, can present itself in many forms, conscious and unconscious, but often manifest through attitudes, beliefs, and actions. And whereas racism unfairly disadvantages specific individuals and communities. And whereas communities that experience racism are more likely to experience poor health, socioeconomic, educational, and other challenges. And whereas the Leland County Board of Commissioners stands with the residents of Leland County in their condemnation of any form of racism and discrimination. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Leland County Board of Commissioners is committing its full attention to advocating for equality, equity, and improving the quality of life and health of all of our residents. Further, be it, be it further resolved that the Leland County Board of Commissioners will assess internal policies and procedures to ensure equality and racial equity is a core element in all organizational practices. Be it further resolved that the Leland County Board of Commissioners will promote, support, and participate in the necessary professional development programming and to support the purposes of this resolution for all employees, commissioners, and elected officials. Be it further resolved that the Leland County Board of Commissioner requests that the county clerk forward copies of this resolution to Governor Whitmer, Senator Peters, Senator Stabenow, Representative Bergman, Senator Vanderwall, Representative O'Malley, and the Michigan Association of Counties, the other 82 counties, and local units of government within Leland County. I thank you for your leadership in passing this very strong resolution. And I stand ready to help in any way I can to facilitate your work, your continued work on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Taylor Bower, 1458 West Trumbull Road, Maple City. My, I wanted to make it, let you all know that on Mondays, we deliver food rescue program of Goodwill Northern Michigan, delivers food to Leland County Christian Neighbors, as well as the Empire Area Food Pantry. It's about 1,500 pounds of food. That food is gone. That food goes out to our community members. And in speaking with, I, I know, I know the volunteers, staff, Mary Stan, Leland County Christian Neighbors. I also know the work that they're doing with the senior services. And I just want to commend them for their work in making sure that families and seniors in particular throughout COVID, that they've been looked after as best we can. Thank you.
Any other comments?
You have admitted after the meeting.
All right. You see none, then we'll move on. Is there any commissioner comments? Mr. Robbins.
I have two things. First one is happened last Tuesday at this, at our meeting. I have a little concerns.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Last Tuesday's meeting, I have a little concern. Maybe when we have our public comment that we make sure that there was an employee sitting at the chair and a male subject came up. And I was a little uneasy about the safety. And I think maybe I'm just suggesting that when people come up and do their public comment that the chair decided is empty, make sure the other person's gone. If you recall that, it was when Michelle was sitting there. I was a little concerned about her safety. So I don't know if you can do something in the future.
I can make sure it's clear.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing is, I just reminded myself back in February, we went six weeks over goals. And there it is, the end of August. I guess I want to keep my word. At some point after budget, we probably should start discussing what our goals are for '22. So just a reminder.
Anything else? Commissioner West, go ahead.
I, I, I did forward two items on to Mr. Janik. And he did forward it on to Board of Commissioners, said that I think two important pieces in the news this week that I'd like us to have further conversation on. One was referenced in public comment about the leading the nation, leading the nation in the, in the gap between what people on, on food systems are getting and what it costs them. We, we got a lot of things that we lead the nation on, but this is not one to be proud of. And then the second item that I shared and it was sent, and I just, it reminded me that we have a subject pilot goal. And there was a, the Grudge article this morning on, on subject systems in Michigan. So I would like, it's, I, kind of like you, I don't want to forget that we have those goals and we, we need to take a look at.
Commissioner Rush.
Um, yes, I, I want to speak to my vote on the cameras for the recycles locations. And the reason I was a no vote on that was because I was hoping that we could get more coverage to our other sites by going with the one company. So I do support the cameras at the recycle sites because I think it's been a problem longstanding. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And the other thing, in regards to the conversation about subject, there were several articles these last couple of weeks about the sewage that has contaminated the bay. And I believe there were warnings last week to the point where our people couldn't even swim in the, any of the lakes. Because of the sewage that is being released by your so-called sanitary system set around place. So I would venture to say that before we go after the little guy, maybe we should go after the big guys.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say, after listening to the public comment, that, that we have assessed our politics, our policies. And we have been doing that all the way through. That is something that we've worked on continuously. And since, you know, with the resolution, we've also added Title VI to, to our policies, which we did not, and which we found out that we shouldn't have, should do that. So the other thing I would say, I hope that these people have made, you know, the, an application for supplemental aid if they, they needed for, you know, for their food, for whatever to the, the, the art funds. So that, I mean, that, that they needed to fill out an application or, or address that. And, and when it comes to the racist, the racism ads that were put in the paper, I believe that those ads were actually racist in their own self. The way that they, they talked against people and, and they weren't very professional. So people who are advocating and promoting those, I would be a little bit leery of myself. So that's my, so then, any other comments? Commissioner Alber.
We report are responsible to represent our constituents. And we have heard from many, many constituents that they experience a problem. And it's our job to address that problem, not to decide. They don't, that they're not telling us the truth about the reality. So I support the fact that we need to continue to address this goal, to work on the resolution that we supported, that we need to support the equality and the quality of life of every citizen of our county. And we will benefit, our children will benefit. We need, we are hearing from our people that there is a problem. We need to address it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rush.
I would just like to remind my fellow commissioners, two words in that resolution. One is quality and one is equity.
Okay. So then that brings us to amendments and transfers. Commissioner. Commissioner Roberts.
I would move to approve amendment number 21-005. I'll start then.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed the same sign. Motion passes 7-0.
I move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $440,184.32.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed the same sign. Motion passes 7-0.
I would move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $2,843,574.32.
Post-odd.
Post-odd, thank you.
Report.
Post-odd claims and accounts, thank you.
Those in favor say aye. All those opposed the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. We are.